I was meaning to work. Please show me the pledge of allegiance. My pledge of allegiance is to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thank you. We'll move to public input. Is there anybody here that wishes to speak? Turning any matters on the agenda?
Yeah.
Okay. Please identify yourself.
Hi, I'm Chris Lorre, property owner of 234 South Washington. My wife and I with our three children have lived in Lynchburg seven and a half years. I'm here today to ask for you to vote in favor of rezoning property 234 South Washington to residential 3. I attended May's zoning and planning meeting at which the request for the rezoned property lost majority vote. At that time, I felt that the concerns brought forward by the public were not legitimate concerns in regards of the rezoning. I'd like to address all those concerns. The first concern, the property owner's finances and cash flow. A zoning and planning committee was mandated not to discuss bank accounts and personal finances, but instead to study land use issues. Second concern, the property owner's ability to maintain and mow the lawn. Since purchasing the property back in March, I have not given the public any reason to believe I am unable to maintain the lawn. I also feel that I should not be compared to any other landlord in the area that neglects to maintain or keep up their properties. Third concern, the chance the property owner would rent to short-term tenants, also new as college students. I will not discriminate against any tenant, but do hope to attract young families with children or individuals looking to retire in the community. The fourth concern, that the neighborhood already has too many rentals. The perception that there are already too many rentals in the area is not reason enough to deny a request to rezone. And the fifth concern, about the type of structure that would be built there. The structure I hope to build are two two-bedroom, one-mat, 1,688 square foot duplexes. Each unit will provide 844 square feet of living space, off-street parking will be available, as well as lawn care and snowing. At this time, I would like to bring up a couple of articles published in Lynchburg Twitterly newsletter that are relevant to the situation. In August of 2014, an article appeared in the newsletter regarding the council's consideration for vacant property registration. In this article, focus was directed at the problems vacant properties bring to neighborhoods and communities. Some of these problems include safety, vandalism, and devaluation of neighborhoods. Due to the fact that the existing structure has declined and has become unlivable, it would cost greater than $9,000 to repair the existing structure. This amount is greater than 50% of the property's appraisal value. I would be unable to make appropriate and needed improvements to the existing structure as a fourplex without needing to be rezoned. By rezoning to R3 and building new construction units, I will be promoting growth and improving the appeal of the neighborhood and community. Another article which was published in February of 2015 highlighted a new multifamily incentive that council approved. The incentive is to attract investors to build multifamily housing. The requirements state that the project should include ten or more units. If the investor qualifies for the incentive, he or she will receive an incremental rebate for about $50,000 or 10% of the original investment in property tax. This article tells me that the city of Lynchburg, with the support of the council, wants to grow and expand Lynchburg. They are willing to give investors a rebate incentive of $50,000 to build a multifamily housing. I am requesting to rezon my property R3 in order to build multifamily housing and am not requesting any kind of rebate or incentive. I would be building two duplexes that would allow four housing units for a newly married couple, a young family, or retired individual. Again, please vote in favor of the request to rezon property 234 South Washington to R3. Thank you.
Any other public input at this time? Seeing none, move on to amendments to the agenda. Are there any amendments to the agenda? Approval of amendments of May 4, 2015, merger of council meeting and May 27, special council meeting, whether you desire.
Move approve.
Second?
It's been moved in second. Any discussion? Hearing none, also in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Thank you very much. Mayor's report, just a couple of things to report. I hope everybody is looking forward to midsummers on June 20th, the Saturday, and also would like to thank those involved in the downtown traffic. It appears we've had some great events downtown, some things going on. And lastly, I thank all the citizens with all the rain we've had and the long-hoary and the things that are going on there. It's been a struggle to keep on the lawns and keep them up and that throughout the community, it appears we're doing a great job of doing that. So again, thank you to the community for staying up on the lawn-hoary and weeding and the other things going on. Committee meetings are reflected there, the traditional meetings that we have. Having no others, moving on to number seven, planning and zoning.
Excuse me.
Yes.
Is it too late for me to make any kind of response for the zoning?
Well, they have opportunity.
I know, I didn't get.
Please step up. Again, please identify yourself.
I'm Bill Smithson. I own the property at 220 and 218 South Washington. I was happy to hear the comments in terms of what the owner intends to do or would like to do with the property that we're discussing for rezoning. And I guess what I would like to say is, is possible, if it would be possible, to do two duplexes, as he described, on that property. Can't that be done on an R2? The property is large enough to be divided, so that two duplex units could be built on it. The concern we have is that with an R3, it's possible to go two stories or higher. And that's not what he's proposing. However, if it's rezoned to R3, it leaves open the possibility that it could, at a future day, handle that or take that. There could be come. So I guess it's a long range that I'm thinking about, and I'm also concerned about the overall essence of our block. We've worked hard, and everyone has really participated in upgrading and renewing the block, and right now, it's a wonderful little residential neighborhood. And my concern is if a building goes in that is two-story, that becomes an apartment building of any kind, it takes away from the neighborhood. It is not appropriate for that, for our particular block and the blocks that are nearby. And we're not against improving it for sure. We're glad to have that happen. What I'm just concerned, I think the rest of us are too, is what could happen eventually? And I know that you can't always do the what-ifs, but the concern is, is if for some reason the plans were changed by whatever the circumstance might be, another person coming in, and it's already established as an R3, then that leaves it open to almost anything. If a building goes in that looks like, or that appears to be an apartment that's more than one-story mine, then it almost becomes commercial. So we're happy to have new people in our block, but we're just concerned about the overall feeling of family, neighborhood, a residential block.
All right, thank you, Philson. Moving on to number seven, planning and zoning.
What you have in front of you this evening is ordinance 4923, which would rezon 234 South Washington from current zoning of R1, single-family dwelling, to R3, multiple-family dwelling.
Is there a motion for that ordinance?
For the second discussion, I'll make a motion that we adopt ordinance 4923.
Do I have a second?
A second.
It's been moved in second. Further discussion? Questions? Gary, you mind if I step up and try and help us on any of these? Thank you.
Gary, one of the things that we discussed before was off-street parking. So if, like Phil said, that if, say, for example, it was zoning R3, and somebody wanted to build a sixplex, two-story, sixplex, or whatever, then we run into the issue that there's probably not enough, or there is not enough, room for off-street parking?
Well, I can't say for sure, but if we were to engineer that particular scenario, then we would have to provide six off-street parking places for each, one for each unit. Given the layout, 16,000 square feet on a corner lot with 25-foot setbacks, I just find it doubtful that you could put that many off-street parking places and building to support the units on that block. But again, not having engineered that particular scenario, I can't say for sure.
And what's the typical size of a parking stall, or how many square feet, or how much does that take up?
I'm not sure.
It requires 9 by 20.
A 9 by 20?
Which you need access to.
So that's 180 square feet, and you add six of them, that's 1,000 square feet of parking required for a sixplex.
Plus access to.
Right.
And the size of the lot, what again, 18?
16,000.
16,000, so 1,000 feet of that taking up parking, plus you still have to have access to it.
Setbacks.
Setbacks.
Nonpaid service, just on the structure.
So that's less than 10%?
You know, without getting into too much detail, we would have to have it on site, on the corner lot, so the parking lots would be pushed back towards the north or toward the west. But again, I don't have a drawing for me, so I can't do it.
The current structure, known as the Libby's, was a four-apartment complex, is that correct?
Yes.
And is a very dilapidated, non-inhabitable structure currently, as it stands?
I believe that's true. The last time I was in it, I can't say it's been in or to be, but I don't want to live there now. It's going to take a lot of work to get to the fact that.
The fact that it's been 40 years being a four-apartment complex changes now because of it taking more than 9,000 to fix it up and all of that, so there's, the grandfather is off.
That's right. The grandfather, the non-conforming use, will no longer be allowed because of substantial improvement, or I believe the demolition of the apartment. As it stands now as an R1, Chris's only recourse to rezoning would be to build a single-family home at that location. And I don't think that was his intention when he purchased the property.
I have a question. We say it's grandfathered like an R3. Would an R2 not support a fourplex?
No, an R2 supports a duplex.
Okay. Not even a triplex?
No, an R2 was limited to two, maybe units on a parcel.
Unless you split the lot?
Unless he were to split the lot.
And what is the process of splitting the lot?
A survey is done on the property to locate buildings and provide parking lines. In other words, it's drawn out typically by a surveyor, licensed surveyor. That then is brought to the planning and zoning commission with notification with people within 200 feet, in this case, 1,000 feet if it's a other county property. Then the planning and zoning commission rules on that plus, but proposal, bill, I don't know, is it 14 days for the protest period?
Yeah, I can't remember exactly, but there is a protest period.
But the lots, but actually doesn't require ordinance. At that point, once planning and zoning has approved, and then the protest period expires, then it goes to the registered deeds, reported in the lots.
The cons of your illness?
The cause of the surveyor, in my mind, it would be essentially, you're building four units on a parcel that the neighborhood has protested, that kind of density. The neighborhood has protested the density of four units. And the workaround, of course, is build two units on two parcels. Essentially, you have the same thing. So I would expect those same residents that come to the planning and zoning commission lots, but hearing, to protest essentially the same use, which is four units on 1,600 square foot.
The concern I have is that if you're more than four units.
That was the concern of the people at the hearing as well.
Yeah, which that would prevent that if that happened. It would be the same as, oh, man, I would prevent it.
Phil?
Yeah, with the lots, but two, you actually have west buildable area, because then you're talking side yards for each of those buildings. So what would be, one tract now with setback 25 feet, 25 feet, side yard, for example, on the north, and maybe garage entrance on the west. If you split it into two lots, then you've got additional side yards for each of those two lots. So you're probably losing another 10 feet in the building space.
And then that probably does let you do just two duplexes and not any?
Well, I don't know if you could, I don't know if you could fit two on it. Like Gary said, you'd have to see a sketch and see what the design of the building would be.
Gary, a couple of places come to mind, and that would be what I just know as the Vicinius threeplex, it's the long blocks, the Vicinius is over on, is it State Street?
Yeah, it's actually.
Oh, that's a two.
It is a fourplex.
And that is zone, then, R2?
R3.
That's R3. And then we have the, those on Main Street next to K4, and that is zone.
R3.
And then we have the condos on Green, just west of the Banshee, R3 as well. Thank you.
Actually, we have MCDS a couple of blocks down from 234 South Washington. That's also R3.
Gary, if you split the lots as an automatic thing on an R2?
No, it would still have to be reasonable.
And the discussion in E&amp;Z, why they ended up voting 42, or whatever it was, against it? What were your reasons?
Well, I hate to speak for the board, because in the meeting, I was, I was voting against their decision. I think they saw a compromise in R2 that would appease the neighborhood and those that were present in the meeting, and still allow Chris to build what he wanted to build.
And that's not going to work.
Well, I still express my concern that there would be protests of the identical density if the lot were attempted to be split. If there were requests to split the lot, build two duplexes, that's four blocks, in my mind, two separate units, but you have four dwelling units on the same parcel. If I were protesting density or the use of the parcel as an apartment area, then I would certainly protest that use as well. And to use the logic of those protesting, no matter what you say, you're going to accept, that doesn't mean it's going to change between now and then the lots that are hearing. And so I don't blame the petitioner for requesting, sticking by his guns and asking for the R3 to be done. I would agree that a $6,000 survey is a small percentage of what the cost of this build-out is going to be. And it's not low. I think the question of whether he'll be able to build two duplexes is still a question. Though, to me, certainly warrants the R3, and then all the.
Gary and Chris's letter does reference things that we have been talking about, the need for duplexes and those kind of things on, in the lots and in those areas, and this does fill that need. It does fill that need, for sure.
I think there was an argument, too, that we need to increase the value of the neighborhood, and I would say that it's been used as a fourplex for a number of years, and it certainly didn't have a negative impact, its continued use as a fourplex. In the worst case, it would be the same as that.
The residents who have been there before certainly aren't the type that developers are going to attract, and would.
What new rents, new rents are going to be since you're set up under the, under whatever, I'm sure, use.
You know, on the other hand, I do understand your concern, because you rezoned an R3, and yes, an R3 potentially is a multi-story apartment complex. That's true. Is it realistic, though, that that can be built on 16,000 square feet?
Just for clarification, though, it's based upon, I've got stories, R1, R2's 35 feet, R3's 45 feet.
How tall is a two-story home? A typical two-story home?
30 feet.
30?
And that's peak of the roof. The one that's there is probably 25, 30 feet tall now. My house is 30.
So the owner's house is a, you know, the Addys.
Right.
So an R2 would allow for?
45 feet, 35 feet.
I wish we had a better idea of whether the goal of the developer would be able to, if he'd be able to build per his plans with an R2 or not.
I, if you're, if you want to ask. I, like he said there, by splitting the lot, you do lose more footage, and being a corner lot, you do, it does start shrinking out, and you start taking away those setbacks and everything. And putting the split in there, the setbacks going that way, it really does shrink the lot up. It would be pushing it. I never really looked at it that way, never.
If it were rezoned R3, and if a multi-unit, 45-foot-tall apartment complex went in, how many potential apartments is that? Is that, because I'm thinking about parking. If there are 10 units there, and you have to allow for two parking spots for every apartment, there isn't any parking for that?
It's allowed for one, two, two, one, three, during. Still, 10, 10 parking stalls, that's what I was trying to get at before. There was six units, six parking stalls, that's 1,000 square feet plus access.
I don't think that Chad Henley is giving it on West, you know, West Union. I don't know how many square feet that is, but that, I mean, compared to a large yard or something, I mean, you could fit that in my yard, or my house, or that. I don't know how big my lot is, but that's pretty heavy residential. I guess without crunching numbers, that's all speculation.
Well, if I had to answer a question, there's a mathematical answer to your question, and I don't have. My best guess is four, tops five, is all you could get into that size parcel. If you were to build a structure, or the EMO suggestion, which I don't believe is in this plan, it's a built-two-story, then possibly you could do that on that 16,000 square feet. You certainly wouldn't do it in an R2, because a fourplex is not, a fourplex would, Jack Namies, fourplex requires an R3, some designation, so. Good example, but I don't know if it applies on the side of concern that we're talking about.
Well, that's a straight front setback, and you have front, both two frontages here, so you get even more setbacks coming on this corner lot. You know, you're squeezing down, but you got the front, and you got two fronts here.
Be 37 feet of front of setback.
But again, I'm reluctant to bring up other examples, because this is, this is a specific example to a specific neighborhood, not a specific one. You know, and we're to consider that to not compare it to other buildings or other opportunities.
I think that's important to remember.
And the resident, I'm, Chris, I mean, we're not asking you, I'm not asking you of these to sign this in blood, but your intent is to build two duplexes. Yes.
And if we, if that were to be reduced to the R2, in theory, then the footprints would be smaller, which would mean your units would be smaller, they would go for less pressure, and hopefully attract a different renter than you're proposing.
Your ideal to the front is R, what value is the R3, Chris?
It's 100 by 162 and a half, 163. A little over 16,000.
Chris, on there, I saw you said something about like 890 square feet per unit. Now, is that times two, because it's a duplex?
Yes.
Okay, so that'd be like 35,000 square feet, you know?
Okay.
Or you're basically one onto Washington and one onto Union?
I'd go, I, if it would be split, I could not do that for sure. I would have to sit and vote north and south the long way. More would have to face the alley, more would have to face the street.
I figured 35,000 square feet, and then 15,000 square feet for parking, which is including some dry or something, that's 5,000, that's less than a third of the property. The setback to what, if they were even half of it, you take, it'd still be less than that, because it's a third.
Gary, what'd you say?
Well, if you split the lot, it would be 42.
42?
Then the 25, six on one, six on the next, six on the other side, so 42 if you split it.
I wish we had a definitive answer as to if it was reasonable to make it R2, if that would work for that scenario.
To give you an idea of the square footage lost, with 25-foot front and setbacks, so you have two frontages on both the side and the east side of the property, you have a five-foot side yard setback, so you're looking at approximately 6,300 square feet lost to setbacks, and then another 1,000 for parking, so 7,300. So out of 16,000 square feet, you're looking at about 8,700 square feet.
To build. And they're coming up 3,500 for the, what he plans to build.
I think the biggest question is if we just had that guarantee, so to speak, that the two duplexes would go up. I think that's probably part of the concern, is what happens between converting to an R3 and what is actually constructed. And I think that's the, that little window there's got the concern built.
Maybe we should ask if they signed it in.
I guess, I guess my question, there's no other approval, other than the fact we would rezon it, and what, there's no approval process. would rezone it, and what, there's no approval process for what actually goes on that property once.
No, and that's an important distinction on rezones, because, no, we don't control the marketplace in that regard, we don't.
I was able to talk to one other adjacent property owner, and they told me that compared to what is there, a new structure, a new residence, is a plus. And it didn't matter to them if it was two duplexes, fourplexes, it was two-story, is saying that.
New and nice.
And more than likely attract new clientele, newer clientele, whatever, they were not opposed to this going to R3.
Well, yeah, I think that goes without saying, because, and that's why staff is in favor of the reason, because we want to see the property improved, we want to see development, we want to see, in this case, the availability of density, I mean, the density's there now, but it's certainly not available, and we also stress any opportunity to build on infill.
Are there any other specific questions, although we've kind of been around the post here a couple times, on several items and that, I'm wanting to cut it off, but counsel, do you have any other specific questions of staff or other group?
I have one. Fred said, for some reason, council decided tonight not to allow you to make this R3, will you pursue making it R2 at this moment? I don't know right now, that's an honest answer, that's all I have for you.
I have a question as well, if, if a request isn't granted at this time, does it prohibit the moving ahead of the plans that the owner developer needs to make? Maybe that's a stupid question, but do you go ahead and have plans drawn up for two duplexes, not knowing whether or not, whether it's R2 or R3? You want your zoning in place for us?
Yep.
This could be the beginning of many such discussions for this council, and, and I think one of the charming things about this is our neighborhoods, but I also think life is changing, and we can look all around this community, there are condos over on Green Street, condos over on, whatever, Main and Leesburg. I mean, you know, when a property degrades so badly, and it's wiped off, and something is put up there, and we cannot, the only thing that we have to go by is our zoning, due to the regulations, that we're trying to build community and build good places, but we also need to make sure that this is a good place to do business, and then you can come in and build something and make some money, because otherwise, it's not gonna happen. So, I'm really, I'm really conflicted about this, but I really think that a young developer, you've heard all this discussion from us tonight, you're setting an example, if this council goes forward and says we're going to approve an R3, the blame is on you to be a good neighbor, because you're gonna have good neighbors, and there are people that have invested in their properties, and they want good neighbors, not a slumber.
Cassie, are you, do you call over the rules?
Yes, sir.
Rule call, please.
Excuse me, just a minute, you might want to explain options unquote here on this ordinance, because it's not just, just specifically yes or no necessarily.
This ordinance would override the recommendation by Pinon Zone and by state statute, because we don't have a provision in our ordinance on how to handle a dispute. To override, you must pass it a two-thirds of the elected body's, which is six votes, any less than six votes, and the recommendation holds, and the rezoners deny it, so it's not a simple majority, and basically go with, let's vote it all in a manner which is, it won't change.
Do we receive the question?
The motion on the floor is to approve ordinance 4923, which is to rezone 234 South Washington to an R3 residential zone. Is that correct, Cassie?
Yes.
Everybody understand ordinance 4923? Phil did that, answer your question there, thank you for bringing that up. Cassie, please call the roll.
Yes. Betty?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
No.
Becky?
Yes.
Seven one vote, ordinance 4923, standing. Moving on to committees, administration and finance. Thank you, Bill, appreciate you getting in. Thank you, Chris.
The first item is sidewalk buffet license request, ordinance 4920 would allow this to happen.
That a motion?
It is a motion.
Second?
The move is second, 4920, for discussion.
We talked about a lot of family scenarios, time-wise and all those kinds of things, I think you've incorporated that in the discussion.
Actually, it's a pretty quick incorporation, because we only refer to the service of alcohol in one paragraph, and the discussion in committee, for those who weren't there, committee requested that to be changed from 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM, currently it's originally is 9:00 AM to 10:00 PM.
Okay, I think that's the other way, if you're talking about moving it earlier, 7:00 AM.
Yeah, 7:00 AM to 10:00 PM. ABC does not allow the service of alcohol before 9:00, so again, we can't do it. I did add a clause in a sentence that includes service and consumption.
Consumption.
So, once 10 o'clock hits, 10:00 PM hits, and there is no more consumption of alcohol on the sidewalk, so, certainly you can go inside and buy a drink and stay inside, but you can't drink that, I believe that was the desire of the committee.
So is that controlled by a last call? Do you go work the air under hands?
I don't know how to do that.
Well, you know, the notice falls on the responsibility of the proprietor. If, if they don't manage that aspect of the business, then they become a violation of the ordinance, and then we take the action under the ordinance against the proprietor.
Are these terms agreeable to the people making the question?
Yes, Bill Daggett, Farley, Farm, I have to say, I had the opportunity to read through the entire ordinance, I think every aspect of it is well thought out, we're in complete agreement, the 10 o'clock is fine with us, the only wiggle room that I vote for is the 200 square foot maximum, if that could maybe have some flex in it by design review, that might enable the ability to match up architectural features of a building, sidewalk breaks, that sort of thing, so that if that could be left at the discretion of the, of the design review, that might be a place that I can see in check with, but otherwise, I'll hold it straight, where the lien is supported.
And is that doable?
Gary, you wanna address that?
I don't know, Bill, we would have to amend the specific reference to a fee moving, and then allow a design review to, which, design review actually has a lot of actual layout and design of the sidewalk, guiding area.
It's in section eight, sub 3B, is the square footage.
Could that be amended for a body showing?
Sure. Is the potential amendment that 200 square foot exceeds, it goes to, that always goes to design review?
Well, I will say this in the meeting, unless, and it goes on to say, shall not exceed 200 square, unless the city council otherwise approves the application, the license specifically authorizing a larger size of the area, so, actually.
There is wiggle room.
There is wiggle room. If you're anticipating sound of licensing, would you have to approve that license, and ultimately it ends up here, and I believe at that point, then make it approved in order here.
From an administration standpoint, it says, city council already asked to approve the final license anyway, I would say you're probably better off to leave that square footage requirement in the wheelhouse of city council, as opposed to putting it in design review. That if someone requests, we then have valid reasons why.
Drawings and everything.
Yeah.
Okay, that's fair.
Right.
Makes sense. Concerns, anything, anybody around the council, if you're getting a chance to review this or read this? Not that it's negative at all, by the way, just asking.
We've discussed this at length, and you put in the items to change that we requested, I mean, unless there's anything.
All right, any further discussion? Hearing none, the ordinance is 4920, the approval of that established, a sidewalk buffet licensing, rule call, please.
Becky?
Yes.
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Motion approved, I have number two.
The next item is the labor.
We've got a whole bunch more boring stuff.
You don't have to. They started from the bottom.
Catch it on the two.
This is a motion to approve the step plan system and implement it in January of 2016, and to continue using the current evaluation system scale, but it is about the wage and salary guidelines for the study of studies, this is a motion to approve.
Second?
This is a motion to approve the.
The one that was given to us.
Okay.
Yes.
The motion is to approve.
To adopt the step.
To adopt the wage and salary study. Everybody understands that, Greg, tell us, explain to us really what we're saying.
Well, just, well, the actual motion is much more than that, it's to adopt the step pay plan, implement the step pay plan effective January 1, 2016, continue to use performance evaluation system, it's, that's currently in place and implemented per the guidelines of, of performance evaluation of outstanding, above average, or meets expectations, or needs improvements, and then the annual cost of living allowances, if granted by city council, would also be applied to each of the 20 steps and the 12 pay range levels.
Did that help anybody? Other discussions, Becky? Council members?
Rule call, please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Lynn?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
No?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Yes.
Your vote didn't count.
Next item is to change the monthly meeting schedule of the city council in Leesburg, eliminating the committee meetings that have been held early in the morning, and going to a two-meeting-a-month schedule, using on Monday, the first Monday, and the third Monday of each month, that is the motion.
So, motion and second, ordinance 4921, further discussion?
This was discussed in committee, and I posed the question, my biggest concern would be if we were to change, how it'd impact the current, the current council, since they were just elected, and would it decrease the amount of participation on that second Monday night? Do we have any deal to have that turn out?
Well, we ask whether any of us would find it difficult to make this schedule.
I think just by asking that question, you're sort of making a case for the two meetings, because you have to ask, when you have your group, after you have your discussion, you then have to come to the full council and ask the same question you were wondering, because if we were in the meeting, we would have just been able to answer it, so, in, in my case, no. Keeping on receiving.
I would like to say, I brought this up in our committee meeting, that I was opposed to this, first time it came around, and it was probably more on a personal basis than anything, because I'm a morning person, I like morning meetings, and it suited me better to do that. However, since then, just listening to a lot of our discussions, and hearing someone ask at, say, our committee meetings, what did the other committee say about this same item? You know, so, the committee that meets on Tuesdays, or Wednesday, Tuesdays, maybe they don't have the luxury of hearing what the other committees discussed, but our committee that meets on Thursday does, because we can ask, well, what did they say? So we're getting some of that feedback, part of us are, getting some feedback on the other half of the council, whereas one half the council does, and, does that make any sense at all? It didn't sound good when it came out. All I was gonna say, if this passes, we would still have committees in June, this would be effective July 1, and we would not have, essentially in July, there would be no more committee meetings, but we'd still have them in June.
Well, I think, you know, I'm a morning person, too, with this, but my concern is a couple. One is, are we still meeting the needs of this community? Will they still have their day and court here, that they can come in and feel comfortable in this setting, bringing their concerns about whatever? We have people that are working out of the community, it's difficult for them to be making meetings, and that's not good. We have got to have participation of everybody here on this, in this council, that's, that's what we all took the notice to say, yes, I will do this. So, life is changing for a lot of people, and we can try it, doesn't mean that we can't go back, and this didn't work, just try something else, so who knows?
I agree, I mean, I still believe that having committees, it's a little bit smaller, that you, I can get more involved in those maybe two particular committees than four, but I still think we're, in having, doing that, we're losing some by not being involved in the other two committees, and hearing what everybody is saying at the same time, so, yeah, this is probably a lot more foreboding, for people to come up, have to stand in front of a podium, and with this microphone, and talk to us, versus sitting down at a different round table with a cup of coffee. I agree, but people are still able to say the same thing here, in this setting, that they would in there, and we should be able to say the same thing here, as we would sitting around a round table with a cup of coffee, so, again, I was against it before, it was on a personal basis, I believe, and I am in favor of this ordinance.
I just keep going back to the transparency and the do forbid.
I just keep going back to the transparency and the do forget conversations, or, you know, wondering what the other committees felt, what the other people felt when they talked about something, or not, or then repeating it at the, in the council meeting. It is sometimes more comfortable to, at the small table, smaller tables, smaller groups, to have the conversation. But again, that is something that, you know, our committees are public, they will still be discussed, and if we're going to expect the citizens to come forward, then we should be able to have our conversations online or in front of a large group as well.
Additional discussions on ordinance forty-nine twenty-one?
I just go back to my question. The others committees, we're not going to lose council members because of your change, in other words, that was my question.
You mean somebody's going to get off.
Yeah, if someone could not make it on the Monday night, I hate to see a third of our council have to step down.
I have some concerns now I didn't before, about the, about the present, like, on Monday nights, on a regular basis, and it's, it's a personal thing too, I'm understanding that, I watch forty events for freshmen are on Mondays, and I'm going to be in that situation next year. My number prior to was, has always been my family, and that's going to be a difficult decision for me, when I feel like I should be too blessed.
Well, and it does come into play if you're going to run the council. Can you say now where your meetings? One goes to say, one Monday, and then two.
Right.
And.
So, while they didn't realize that I have other work, that's whatever, I'm here again.
I don't know if we have a state policy or anything about absences from meetings by council. Do we, is there anything that says something?
Well, you, I'm not, barely correcting, because I'm probably going to be wrong here, but I'm not sure even if you have a policy, you have a way to enforce it since you were, as a council, maybe you're elected official by the public.
So, theoretically, we could not come to any meetings, and it's still a problem.
You could go to Alaska and miss a couple meetings.
You know, but, but I also have talked to people, and I tell them that our committees meet at six-thirty in the morning, and if their eyes get big, you go, you do what, Lynn?
My, my history would say that those meetings were originally established at six-thirty in the morning to accommodate working, working people, if you went to work at eight o'clock or nine o'clock in the morning, you were usually able to get your meetings done and still get to work. If you work past six o'clock or six-thirty in the evening, it makes it, it makes it harder to attend to a Monday evening, or Monday.
And I, I have a question concerning councilperson, his comment about online conversations. Does council have online conversations?
I was referring to.
The public?
The public.
And the council.
Okay, that's all I need.
The discussion.
I thought maybe you were having online conversations.
No, they can see the full conversation, that they don't see.
All right, any further discussion, ordinance forty-nine twenty-one? Roll call, please.
Becky?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Benny?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Ordinance forty-nine twenty-one has been approved, any others for administration?
I don't think so.
Thank you, utilities?
I'm not quite sure where we are here on the utility shut-off hearing, reading all of the material that's here, which is voluminous.
Any other?
What?
Does that's like Greg, is that a date?
No, I'm, I'm doing this.
Bring this up on a date, Greg.
This, the party has requested a hearing in front of city council not to have their utilities disconnected for non-payment. They've been advised at the hearing this evening, the opportunity to present their case, they've asked to have it extended to June fourth, to make their payment to become current. And based upon the history of over several years of non-payment, staff recommendation is to, to disconnect, or at, at the very least, if we have received payment by June fourth, to disconnect and allow whether extensions are paid in full and run it bill run current.
I still need a motion here, though.
Yes.
I would move that we do, as Greg has suggested, I mean, he's suggested a couple things, but I'm willing personally to let it go and see whether it's going to be the fourth, and if no effort, I'm sorry, if it hasn't been brought up to date by the fourth, to disconnect.
I would also, I would also ask, based upon the party's history, that any future non-payments, that they be disconnected per, per policy and no extensions allowed.
I would hope that would be included in my motion.
Okay. You heard a motion, and the second, and third second?
Second.
Would move the second and further discussion?
I'd like to ask a question, and I guess coming from a healthcare background, I, it, are Friday reports, why can't you share it if they ask, or are they just press council?
I want to answer your question this way, public documents, anybody who would like to have a copy of?
Okay, and would we ever have a policy on, on redacting any, is that, if, if those were to be sent out to anybody that asks?
If it's in the public document, unless there's a specific statute or thing that would require redaction, then, then we would not redact it.
Bill, any additional?
No, I'm here, Greg, right.
Thank you. Further discussion? The motion is, as stated by David?
What was that?
What?
What was your motive?
David's motion is that we, you know, until the fourth, to bring this current and paid in full at such time, the utilities would remain on, and if any time in the future, they do not stay current, the, the current ordinance goes into play with no chance for additional time or payment of, of the bill in the future.
So, the fourth, five fifteen, I didn't say, so.
Bring it current, yes.
Bring a current paid in full by the end of the day on the fourth.
On the fourth.
Before the, before we turn up.
Oh, yes.
Sure, we say the end of the day, meaning by the fourth.
By the end.
By the end.
Are these two, two adults or children, or anyone still? Each are ours, just?
Okay, everybody understands the motion? The key points are paid in full by five o'clock, future non-payment resulting in ordinance as follows, with no additional time paid.
So, we're, we're done, two different votes, one on the demand day by June fourth, and the second regarding the, if it happens again.
Those would have to be changed made by the motioner in the second, correct?
Well, yes, but also if it's passed this way, you can always change your mind in the future if that situation gets up.
Okay, thank you. Greg, any more calls?
No.
All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, say aye, thank you. Item number two?
Item number two deals with a utility line locator. I always thought that was someone up on the cherry picker looking down at the ground trying to see where the utility line is. But we're requesting a big piece of equipment that will help them determine where subsurface utility lines are located, is that right, Kim?
Yes.
Okay, anyway, they're requesting six thousand and one dollar, dollars for this equipment to be purchased from Subsurface Solutions, and I so moved.
Been moved, is there a second?
There's.
Moved and seconded to expenditure six thousand one dollars to Subsurface Solutions, any further discussion?
I should say it's a budgeted item.
It is under budget?
Under budget, but it is.
Thank you, David, hearing done, roll call, please.
Becky?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Benny?
Yes.
Kelly?
Yes.
Okay, and the next one is floodgate engineering proposal from Wilson and Company. I can't do this justice, it's a request for fifteen thousand dollars to go to Wilson. Tim, would you mind?
No, sir.
David, before, Tim, is there, was that a motion?
Yes.
Fifteen thousand thirty-six dollars?
Yes.
Is there a second?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to expenditure fifteen thousand thirty-six dollars with Wilson and Company, further discussion, please.
Would you like?
Questions?
Says that we're cutting a bunch of stuff to fund this, am I correct?
Yeah, a little bit. This is probably one item that we could form without budgeting. The sole purpose is to reduce the amount of water that is in the ditch that goes through Westview. It's a bigger project to try to rebuild the box colors that are in all of our two channels, the ditch, or building. This is one that we thought that we could do immediately.
What this gives us, Tim, is all the engineering to move forward with that project, is such a, was it funded?
Yes.
Any further discussions?
Again, I say it's critically important to our constituents that we be doing something, and therefore, I'm.
But this is just engineering?
Correct, correct.
And we have, whatever we come back with?
Figure it out.
Then we'll grow the next.
Then we do a bit.
And these items that are being, these are all items that were in this year's budget, in, in the 2015 budget.
That's correct. Are these automatically going to be rolled over to next year's budget? We've already made it next year's budget, haven't we?
Don't you?
No.
We will, we will have preliminary.
We have a preliminary, that's what.
A preliminary.
Ah, okay.
It's just the first of a couple forty-nine.
You know, I, I would say, you know, if they're rolled over, you know, they'll be reevaluated by staff, and if they need to be brought forward, they can be brought forward at that time.
Are any of these things that have been cut, are they going to hinder any of the business that can be done, either in the sunroom or at the pool, or, you know, I'm not, with the understanding that the engineering work needs to be done. I understand that, but I, I guess I want the other agents to know that I have concern about what is the impact of their, their programs as well.
Well, from, can I go? I'm sorry.
Well, I, you know.
I understand what you're saying.
You know, will they fully be able to provide the, the kind of mirrors they might have at the sunroom, or the light bars set out of good shape, you know, are there umbrellas?
The galley catering kitchen for the sunroom was made prior to current manager, or in management, and they feel at this time it's not needed, to provide the service. The sunshade replacements are currently still in good enough condition that they don't need to be replaced. Part of the challenge becomes when you're making a five-year rolling capital improvement plan, you think things are going to become obsolete, obsolete or wear out, and in this case, it hasn't. First floor conference chairs will do with what we have.
Additional questions on this engineering? Roll call, please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Kelly?
The next thing that we have.
Excuse me, I just. Timeline for completion of project, for completion of the engineering.
Correct.
Got it, okay. Thank you.
Is that it?
Yes, thank you.
The next thing is the, again, one of Greg's things that has taken a tremendous amount of time, and that is getting a pole attachment agreement with Westar, which has now been accomplished. Correct, Greg? And.
You have a proposal in front of you.
Pardon me? You have a proposal in front of you, good, good.
Is that a motion, David?
It's an emotion, it's an e-motion, it's a motion to accept this proposal, is that what you want to have?
Motion to approve the agreement.
A motion to approve the agreement with Westar.
Seconded. It's been moved and seconded to approve the agreement for the discussion concerning the pole attachment agreement. Hearing done. All those in favor, say aye?
Aye.
Aye.
Both say aye, thank you, any others, David?
And just as a co-decile to that statement, I was amazed to find out that what we're really talking about are nine poles.
Correct.
Yeah.
Okay. Took more paper to make that agreement, and there's now those nine poles.
No more, nothing else.
Streets parked.
First item is to approve the current golf cart lease for another year. We signed a five-year lease for seventy-five hundred dollars, go through two thousand nineteen, this will be with Kansas Golf and Turf, Inwood, Kansas, that is the motion.
And moved and seconded?
Seconded.
Moved and seconded to approve seventy-five hundred for Kansas Golf and Turf, any further discussion?
Just a quick question, how many golf carts are we talking about?
It's ten.
It's ten here.
Ten, David. Good question, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Kelly?
Yes.
Benny?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
Next item is hospital signage, I'm going to turn this over to house person Betty Nelson, she's the one who brought this up.
How was? Our new facilities manager in the hospital, who is now living in town, the cave was from Carl, the canvas, commented on like the second day at work, there wasn't any of the international signage, hospital signage, the blue sign with the Y H located on Lincoln from Harrison Cole to the hospital. There is international signage on both sides of Harrison Cole and on Cave Four. And at the time, it was because we were ready to construction, I thought it was just going to be moved, because there used to be international signage, and there is not now, is on the C P D signs, but, so I found out, as I was driving along, I found myself looking for what I recognized to be the international sign, to find my way to the hospital. And I made the recommendation that staff look into adding one or two signs, one on either side of the main Lincoln intersection, the way coming to the hospital.
Excuse me, but isn't there one on Burma pointing toward the turn-on Lincoln?
Yes, there's nothing on Lincoln.
Okay.
There's nothing on Lincoln. And of, of interest to note is, we've been averaging about fifty new to our facility, never been seen before, patients, about fifty long, and many of those come from out of town, and obviously, once you find it, you're in good shape, if you grow up here, you're fine, but if you're, you have signage, you get on Lincoln, and then where is it? So, I would like to make the motion, is that not of interest? Would like to make a motion to, to place one, two signs, Kim, you were going to look into that? Tim, you were going to look into that, is that right? One to two signs?
Yes.
Hospital signs?
Yes, two signs.
And we were going to try and put it somewhere where we're going to drill new holes with holes and create new stuff.
So have you looked for signage placement, Tim, you and your staff?
We've looked at it. Chief and I looked at it. We think over at Farley's and in front of city hall would probably be appropriate. And we're actually looking to purchase in a corridor also that we can make good holes. We could use it for many things, but...
So you're planning on post...
I'm sorry, I didn't hear you.
You're planning on additional posts and signage?
Yes, if that's what council wishes.
We talked about utilizing existing sign in the whole hospital.
That's, according to chief, that's not proper. Sorry. Under that motion.
I see that smile.
I'll second, do we have a second on that?
We do now.
Okay, I'll second.
Do we need to bring up labor and sign pollution? Hospital sign? Yeah, yeah, what's it saying? All right, you're in, no further discussion on how this could be sign pollution. I was in favor of the motion to install at least two Hs. Say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Roll call, please. How was safety?
First up is the scoop stretchers for EMS. And as I scroll down to project page, I'm not covering... Sorry. EMS is requesting $1,719.98 to purchase two, two new split litter or scoop stretchers for EMS. The amount budgeted would be $2,500, so that is under the budget amount and I would like to make the motion that we approve that purchase.
Seven.
The three and second, do we mind this, everybody?
About true.
About true.
About true.
Thank you. I'm sure that's far in the motion.
Indeed it is.
I thought it was. So, any further discussion on the scoop stretchers?
Yes. Betty? Exactly. Can you illuminate me on what a scoop stretcher is?
I actually had the opportunity to see them in action and Tim could probably give a better talk. I'll tell you that it's a stretcher that looks like this when they carry it in and it breaks apart like that and you scoop a patient like that and it snaps together and it makes it easier for everybody involved. Is that pretty much it?
It's pretty much it.
I wonder if from now on, you could give the definition of these things instead of application to do it?
You mean much like you do for utilities?
I second that one.
Thank you very much.
Instead of going back to the scoop and scoop, right? All right, all those in favor say aye?
Aye. Wait, wait, wait. Where's that? It was a test. I'm wasting it here.
Roll call, please.
Helen?
Yes.
Benny?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Benny?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
Nick?
Yes.
Motion approved, Betty, any others?
I don't have any others.
Thank you. Item number nine?
I'd like to move that we go into executive session for 20 minutes to discuss matters related to the acquisition of real estate and to include city attorney and city attorney.
That's a motion?
That is.
And second? With the second, all those in favor say aye?
Aye.
David? All right, we're clean. Thank you all for waiting. Item number 10, consideration of purchase order, ordinance 4922, what is your desire?
Motion to approve.
And moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any discussion? Very done, roll call, please.
Helen?
Yes.
Betty?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
Becky?
Yes.
Thank you all for being here to approve that. There are law ordinance 4818 and 4819, what is your desire?
Motion to approve.
And moved, is there a second?
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion? Roll call, please.
Becky?
Yes.
Eamonn?
Yes.
David?
Yes.
Cory?
Yes.
Rick?
Yes.
Lane?
Yes.
Benny?
Yes.
Helen?
Yes.
Motion approved, any others? Item number 12. Is there a motion to adjourn?
So moved?
Second?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor say aye?
Aye.
Opposed, same sign? Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you all.